This episode of Texas Barons Podcast is brought to you by our first unofficial sponsor, White Realty. Are you looking to start, move, or expand your business to downtown Wichita Falls? Look no further than White Realty. White Realty owns and operates four of the most prominent buildings in downtown Wichita Falls area, the Hamilton Building, the Energy Center, the Oil and Gas Building, and City National Bank. White Realty has tenants of all kinds, lawyers, counselors, restaurants, and even someone that sells comic books. There's so many different options and floor plans available for any type of business you have. And if that's not enough, or you're not in need of an office space, but need a large event room to host parties, proms, or weddings, check out the ballroom on top of the Hamilton Building. Again, that's a White Realty here in Wichita Falls. And don't forget to mention my name, Levi Watts, at your lease signing to take advantage of their referral program.
Texas Barons Podcast, let's go.
You are now about to witness the strength of street knowledge.
And we're recording. So anyways, this is our first official ever episode of Texas Barons Podcast. And then I'm proud to have no one, you know, besides my dad, I thought would be the great, perfect first guest because on Texas Barons, we're here to talk about entrepreneurship and small business, you know, owners and but also local politics. And you wouldn't believe it, but my dad does both of them. So he's got a lot of experience with both and all the way from back in the day of Midway Fish Farm to Midwest Waste. And then we had a quick run at a different precinct for county commissioner in 2000. And then in 2013, is that when we? In 15? And it's for precinct three?
Four.
Four. Okay. And then so anyways, plenty, plenty of experience here. And so the perfect first guest. And we're just going to pick his brain and hear plenty of stories of how he got to where he is now, and then some problems along the way and things that he's learned and people that he's met. So anyways, I think a perfect first story is to just kind of tell us about Midway Fish Farm. And then I know that you worked there before you bought it. And then so kind of just tell us about how you, the transition of employee to ownership.
Yeah, well, it was a great experience and a lot of hard work across time about nineteen eighty-four, I guess, the start of eighty-four. I'd came home from school sick. And after a couple of months of resting up, had mono real bad. And I went over there to help out. Actually, the guy that owned it was partners with us on a horse that me and Joe Howard Williamson had together. And I just filling in for a timeframe, just to help them and ended up staying and stayed until me and Carrie got married in nineteen and eighty-eight. And then he, the owner had approached me about buying that business. So we decided to do that. And that's where we first called home.
I gotcha. Yeah. And that's where, that's actually where I came into the world at, you know? And I mean, started at a hospital and then they brought me home to Midway Fish Farm. And then so some of my first core memories are from Midway. But anyways, it was a fun business and everyone, almost everyone that you talk to from this area has a story from it. But it wasn't the best for our family, was it?
It was just very, very hard. You know, it's worse or as bad as running a dairy. You can't ever get away from it. And storm season, like in the spring of the year, you worry all the time about losing power and how you're going to keep everything alive if you west to lose power. And that's always a hard thing. But I was young and able to do a lot. And so had good health and that made a big difference. And we, we stayed there until 2000. And actually, at that time, I had ran initially for county commissioner precinct three at the time against Gordon Griffith. I ran as Republican and that was not the precinct to have done that in. And strongly Democratic held a position and but I thought nothing of that. Bill Clinton was in office at the time, wasn't going to be a part of all of that and wanted to make sure that I ran as a Republican. And so that was my first come out the gate as a candidate for county position and learned a lot, met a lot of good people doing that. And then of course, just being at the fish farm and having most of the county as, as well as surrounding areas come and trade with us. That was a super opportunity to get to meet so many people that made wonderful friends across time and still have them. And like you say, bukoo's of memories.
Right, right. Well, so whenever you were in transition of buying it from, what was that guy's name? Randy?
Randy.
Randy. You know, you were a young man and I know times were way different back then and banking and everything and loans are different now. But how did, how did you and mom go about getting the money or capital to cover a new business like that?
Well, we at that time, he owner financed the business to us. And then operating, I was fortunate to get to grow up working for the Williamsons at State National Bank and had actually went through ag co-op with them before even in ag co-op, I'd worked with the Williamsons and then did that throughout my high school years, even into college. And, and so I was fortunate to have a good relationship with the bank and that was able to do operational stuff as we needed from time to time. And, you know, we were very fortunate in that because a lot of people don't have a close relationship with the banking family like I did.
Right, right. That is, I mean, that's something, that's something I feel like that almost I take for granted with a gentleman named Randy Catlin, that dad has known all of his life. And then now I'm, I bank with his bank, he's at First Bank. And then I just know that he has benefited me greatly just for the sole fact of him putting trust in me as a young man, whether it be buying an old truck. And then after that, First Bank and Randy helped me start my first businesses. You know, he took the chance on me and then gave me the money I needed to go into Texas Superior Services. So anyways, that, that is, that it's a hard relationship and a weird one to grow. But I feel like if anyone ever had the opportunity to know somebody that works at a bank, or, or if you're lucky enough to know them that owns a bank, got to hang on to that because that's the families that you need to know. Just because they, they want to build their business, but they also want you to build yours or buy your house or, you know, buy your car with them. So.
Sure. Randy's absolutely a great one to mention like that because, you know, he's had so much experience in the business world himself. He's a business person and he's just done so much and been involved with so much. His family's been in the oil business forever as well as all kinds of real estate and, and different projects. And his sister's very active in real estate as well. And so I think that expertise and knowledge that comes with that, instead of just being a lender, he's somebody that has extreme knowledge of a lot of different things that a person can benefit from.
Right. I agree. I agree. So I like to plug anytime I can, First Bank, they started in Burke Burnett. They have a cool story. I feel like they kind of rode the wave of the oil coming into this county. They started in Burke and then now they're all over the county. And anytime I can recommend them, I tell all my friends to go bank with First Bank just because they'll, you know, they'll put your trust, put their trust in you if you got the, you know, meat and potatoes behind you to do it. But anyway, so that's, that's an important part of the story is to know how to get started. And then owner financing is for sure, it's a different one, but it's still out there. And then I think more people than, than you realize do that. And it's just finding the right person that you can trust to, you know, basically either whether you're selling it or giving, you know, the business or you're buying it from them. So that's a hard one to find. But anyway, so that's how you got the fish farm. And then, you know, tell us about leaving and getting out of the business and.
Yeah, we, we were there, like I say, until 2000 and we had ran the campaign, campaign for precinct three out of there. And then of course, that year, it was extremely dry and we were having tremendous trouble with water and we pumped all of our water out of the ground. We didn't use irrigation water. And it was a paramount to have that cold salty groundwater that we were able to pump there. And that began to give us trouble. So we were fortunate enough to have someone come along that was interested in what we had as a holding facility in the back was actually a machine shop at some point in time and had tremendous.
Cool. I didn't, I didn't know that part. Okay.
Electrical power plumbed into it. So that gave them the opportunity they were looking for. And it just was a win-win. So we transitioned in 2000. I went and I was still city secretary for the town of Pleasant Valley, which had maintained the whole time I was at the fish farm as well. It just kind of, the fish farm served as town hall for the community of Pleasant Valley there, which is an incorporated city in itself. And I was the water manager and took care of reading water meters and billing everyone for water and had my water license and learned a bunch about water as well as serving on Wichita Valley's water board. I got on there in nineteen and eighty-five, still serve on the Wichita County or Wichita Valley Water Supply Corporation Board. And it's been a great entity, but I had an interest in water and selling water. And I think that learned a lot from that. So that became my sole source of, of income and wasn't a great deal at the time and knew we had to do something else relatively quickly. And so within a short period of time from there is when I went to work for ISI.
Right, right.
I will park at the landfill.
Whenever you were in the transition period of getting Midway Fish Farm, did you have any of us kids yet?
Yes. We, everybody was born.
Okay, okay. So I mean, that's a, that's a real game changer of, of a, say a bachelor or bachelorette looking into going into business where they just got to worry about, say, a dog or themselves. And they can eat ramen noodles. But when, when you have a full-fledged family to worry about, that really puts the stakes up high. So you know?
You would have been five years old. Born, you were born in ninety-five. So this was two thousand. So it was, that's how old you would have been.
Yeah. So that, that it's just a big, it's a humongous weight on your shoulders to say, you know, to try putting it in perspective. But so I respect, you know, having to drop it and change and look for greener pastures. So, you know, you, you had three little kids to feed. So, I mean, and that is a, it's a feat in its own. But anyways, you've mentioned being on a board or two, but I think this is something extremely important to bring up about you that I really admire is that you're on at least what, a hundred and fifty-seven different boards. But, but in reality, I mean, the amount of people that you've known and networked from that, it's worth every late night meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, it has been. That's been a pleasure to get to serve on a lot of our area boards of different types, whether it's nine-one-one board, or it's appraisal district board, or campfire, the bank board. You just come across some fantastic people that helped shape your life and mold you. And I was fortunate because of so much of the time I was at the younger than most of the men that I served with. And I feel like just on the school board alone, you know, all of the guys that I served with, older, been around the block longer than me, knew a lot more. And I felt like that's really helped shape my ability in politics, just understanding the way I was taught to do business from them. So it's been a fantastic pleasure to get to serve. Sometimes it seems like it's a lot, but I thoroughly enjoyed it and really got to meet some of the most fantastic people in Wichita County.
Right, right. And I feel like, honestly, I feel like that's where majority of like the moving of maybe just the moving parts of this whole city or county or whatever kind of happens is on these volunteer boards, maybe not so much even elected things that, because a lot of it isn't the top dogs. It's a lot of just people, blue collar people that want to volunteer and, you know, majority rules on a lot of these things. So it's a bunch of normal people that live normal lives, just volunteering their time in order to, you know, maybe better someone else's. So.
That's absolutely true. And the, and the experience that's gained from it, I think, is irreplaceable and, and just phenomenal that what a person can pick up and, and the knowledge that you come by, whether you're going to trainings for different boards you serve on, or whatever required there. I think that it helps build a person up that wants to put in that time and, and serve and meet other great people.
Right. What, what do you think it is that drew you towards? Because I mean, you've volunteered a lot. You've cooked a lot of catfish at a different, you know, different charity events. You've been on a lot of boards. I've seen you come home probably ten billion times, late, late, late from X, Y, and Z board. And you think it was just like you started one and you're like, this is good. I got to help out. Or like you knew that you were meeting great people. Like, is it just a call to serve?
Yeah, I think it's a call to serve. And I think it's just the interest that you have in being involved in the community. I think my mom was very involved and outgoing like that. And, and I felt that I picked that up from her more than likely because she was very active. And whether it was church or in all kinds of school events and different things, I, I felt like that it was something that was honorable to do. And, and so getting to be involved in all of that stuff, I think is a great pleasure. And a lot of people don't take the time to get to experience. Even our senior citizens board in Iowa Park, I mean, what a great group of guys and girls we had and such fun times we had, even though it was a lot of work sometimes that we did fundraisers, but we had such a great time doing it. So you meet and so many wonderful people. And I think that's worth it all right there just to get to be involved with them.
Right. I, I can just see, you know, and I know I'm not the only one that notices this about you, but I pick it up myself. It's my day-to-day life as well. But you're almost obsessed with working. You love, you're a workhorse, you know? And I get that. I a hundred and ten percent get that from you. And I think that just kind of flows into your volunteer and charity groups. And I mean, it's, it's not for everybody. Clearly, a lot of people don't like to work or anything or put some sweat in. And I've seen you umpteen million times drag that catfish trailer around. And then whether, whether it was the kidfish trailer back in the day, or in, you know, in, in more recent years, it's a cooking trailer anyways. So dad is, dad is a chef to be known and a chef to be feared. And sometimes experiments go wrong, but with the things he's honed in, man, he's good at. So anyways, if you ever get the chance to, to be a part of a charity that dad's cooking at, go do it and, and you'll enjoy it for sure. But I've, I've seriously always admired the amount of different volunteer things that you've done. And as a kid, I was like, oh my gosh, this is horrible. I hate going to these things. But now that I'm older, I'm a dad, I'm a business owner, I see exactly, exactly why you did. And I see why you drug us around to do it too, you know, because I could still have that same understanding as a twenty-six-year-old instead of when I was a teenager, I got to, you know, be annoyed by it or whatever. Now I get to appreciate it. So just know it, it didn't go unnoticed. It did help. So.
No, I think that is. And I think that that's typically what we do when we're young is be annoyed by a lot of those things that I, no telling how much I had to sit out in the school auditorium, wait on mom to do a variety show or whatever the case be, or sit in the pews at church and wait for them to organize some kind of program. Band boosters had, they used to have weekend bean and cornbread dinners. And so, or just being a part of all that somehow bleeds over. And when you get old enough, that's what you start doing.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I've tried. I joined a group and we don't even have to talk about it. But honestly, luckily, it didn't work out immediately. And it just wasn't, it wasn't structured like I thought it was. And I guess the groups coming off the ground are just not an easy thing to do. And especially, I'm kind of a control freak. So anything I get into, I like kind of being in charge and I wasn't. So that was even weirder. So, but give me some time. I'll, I'll get into something. But I, on the same topic, I've just always held on to something that mom actually said was that this was after you had got elected as the commissioner. But she had said, she used to, you know, get annoyed at you coming home so late after this board meeting, that board meeting, blah, blah, blah. But she realized once you won, that you were setting yourself up and networking all these decades and, you know, making friends, making supporters, people that probably helped you run your election, you met majority of them through volunteering or working. So that I've always held pretty close to me of like, yeah, he, he was working on his political career. It wasn't happening now. It's, it's hard for people, especially my generation, to think that they want X and then not taking consideration. You got to do A, B, C, D, E, all the way to X. And then we're kind of just a, I want it now, Amazon Prime generation. And it's, it's just hard to, it's hard to wrap your mind around the long haul, but clearly it works out. I mean, you're a perfect example of it.
Well, and I think that, you know, it's a combination of wanting to be involved and then loving what you did, being involved. And I'm just been very fortunate to be on some great groups with different guys that, and girls that are phenomenal and, and get to meet those and serve with ones that have come and gone that I just thank the world of. And, you know, it's, it's irreplaceable. You couldn't have done anything to encounter some of the people that is the opportunity to get to put in that kind of time with and learn from. And.
And you've met some of your best friends through volunteering, haven't you? Like Tony and Ben and?
Or maybe, maybe you con your best friends.
That's for sure. Poor Raymond has been drugged to every state doing something. Yep, that's for sure true.
Yeah, they have, I have to give it to all of my friends across the board. They have always been supportive and, and helpful and participated. And it's why it's real good to have a good set of good friends because they're, mine are all workers and, and really chip in and have helped make a lot of different programs better because they've been willing to serve.
Right, right. Exactly. And then here's, here's where it like gets flipped is that as soon as that phone call rings on your end, you're ready to go help them as well, you know? No money to be had, no, no anything, no questions asked. You're there, ready to help them whether they're running or whether they're doing a charity event. So I think that's just awesome. But so, so in 2000, had a failed election. It just wasn't the right time and it wasn't the right area. But then fast forward to, it was in 2010?
Two thousand.
And then you had left the job. He worked at ISI for years and years, over a decade. And ISI was a large waste management company.
About the third largest in the country at the time. And, and had a fantastic owner, Mickey Flood from Fort Worth, just a great guy, great leader and got to work with some super guys there. They exposed me to a lot. Even, you know, I had, was charged with taking care of the municipalities that we picked up trash in. And at the time, about fifty-three cities when I left ISI. We had merged at the time twice already. And Mickey no longer was running the, the company. But I just can't tell you how good it was and the experience that I had from people like him and the different, whether it's CFOs or COOs or CEO like Mickey that got to work with, that was just fantastic. And, and we were exposed to all those, even though we had a district of our own here in North Texas, Southern Oklahoma area. I was just exposed to them corporately as well. And that really did help teach me and train me in the trash business.
Right, right. And, and we don't have to talk about leaving, but at some point you did leave in two thousand nine or ten?
Two thousand ten. Yes. When we concluded pitching a proposal to the city of Wichita Falls about their trash and analyzing that trash. And we'd appraised their equipment and looked at landfill and how we'd tie that in, presented that. The city wasn't interested at the time. And, and then I really thought at that point in time, once I had completed that, I would go to work for State National Bank. And that's really what I had on my mind at the time. And, and as opportunity would have it, we, the, I had prepared to do that when the opportunity arose to invest and go the route of owning our own trash company.
Right, right.
And so one of the corporate attorneys, Kent Durham, which I had worked with for a long time.
At ISI, corporate attorney at ISI.
Yes. And then as well as Jay Zook, one of the landfill managers there. Jay, Jay's uncle ran all the landfills for ISI. And then Jay was in charge of Buffalo Creek and.
At Iowa Park location.
Yes. And had worked for waste management prior to that. But he had left about two years at this point. So had Kent had left at the first merger, both of them, for the most part, had went on new, different opportunities that arose when we first merged. And so we were bought out of Canada. And then, but that was a good merger and it was all, all was good. And we continued to learn a whole bunch more. But then in two thousand and ten, we began to discuss that opportunity. If we did something and put our own company together.
Right. And wasn't there another, who's the fourth partner?
Beth Wood Sweet is the fourth partner of ours. And she just has somebody that's always been involved with all aspects of.
Everything.
Everything that we've had going on and always interested, a strong businesswoman.
She's a superwoman is what she is. She can get it done.
Comes by naturally because her, she gets it from her mom.
Right, right. Exactly. She's a powerful, both of them are powerful women.
Yep. And so that was just made a good click of four people that were very interested. And so we had to, from scratch, put together what we wanted to do.
And did you assemble the team?
Uh, yes.
You personally called everyone and got them thinking?
Yes. Kent had, the attorney had wanted to, I knew his interest was there. And then I'd approached Beth about it and she was very interested as, and then we called Jay and, and he was, he had a good operational sense about him as to what a lot of the different steps that he thought we should approach and take. And strategically, I had just worked with him for very closely for a long time, as with Kent in the trash business. So it was a good fit. And we were able to strategize what we wanted to do and did something here in the Wichita County, Montague County, Young County, Clay County, Archer County. We had taken this area and then moved on to Parker County and Tarrant County.
Yeah. And what's the caterer? Is that Wise County?
Wise County. We were picking up lots of trash in Wise County as well.
I mean, you can't drive to Fort Worth without still seeing those old trash cans. I still get excited every single day. I don't know the, for the people that ever watch this on YouTube, I'm wearing my old Midwest Waste shirt right now, still representing the company proudly. Because, I mean, really, I feel like in, we're in, you and I were in two different stages of our lives, me being a young man graduating high school and you transitioning back into a business ownership. Like Midwest Waste, we grew up with Midwest Waste, me and you both did. And when, when this started, yes, there was four partners and they did all the strategic, all the setting up, all the purchasing, all the nitty gritty. But when the rubber hit the road, it was me and dad in that trash truck. And there, there's a, there's a picture that you had at Midwest Waste. I think it's in one of, maybe in your Maybe in your county office, but it was dad driving the truck and me on the back of the dump truck, you know, and that's just what it was. I had an old neon shirt, I think that I took from my brother just for somewhat of safety, but. I mean, we, we went out there and we delivered every single trash can and then you took me to football practice at the end of. That summer, you know, every single end of the day that summer and uh, I mean, we really like, I feel like I became a man. At working at that place and that, so that place really.
All those initial trash cans and dumpsters that we put out, you and I had to do those.
Every single one and building them from scratch and that big old trailer, we didn't fit on a lot of roads and meeting people and then. Getting turned down by people, I mean, it was just, it was experience from start to beginning and. You know, I feel like I really got my, one, I got to watch you really, you know. Do it and grow from a teeny tiny little one truck operation to, you know, a humongous monster. You know, I got to watch all that, so that's really what I hold to me. Whenever I think of entrepreneurship and then what, what drives me to do it is because I got to watch it firsthand and I just loved it and it, it sucked. It absolutely sucked riding on the back of that trash truck and I just think, I don't. I can't remember if you have ever watched the Johnny Cash movie Walk the Line with Joaquin Phoenix in it. Well, uh, they're trying to record their uh, first deal, I think you could pay like twenty-five cents to go record at this place. Well, the guy recording Johnny Cash tells him like, this sucks, you know, to put some emphasis on it, whatever. This isn't good, well then Johnny asked him, uh, do you have a problem with the air force and he said, no, and he said, well, I do. And then that really gave him his deep, you know, his, his soul to his music, well anyways. I get to thinking, do I have a problem with the trash company? It, it's those bad, tough, tough jobs that really tell you um, what you do and don't wanna do and. And I have to give Midwest Waste praise because it, it helped me become the man I am, but. Man, I smelled some stinky gross stuff on the back of that and got hit with some nasty stuff back there, so. Anyways, it's, it's a, it's growing pains that we both went through in two different parts of a man's life and. I, I really hold that dear to me big time, but I want to know like, when, about your experience. Whenever you went in, you didn't have all the semi-truck experience or the uh, um, I mean.
No, I, I had grown up around equipment, farm equipment and the big equipment in some respects, but never around trucking.
Right.
And so.
And that's a whole beast within itself with the paperwork.
Get my CDLs and, and uh, I was the first driver for Midwest Waste and that was uh. Something that was worrisome to me, we were lucky to have uh, the mechanic we had to. Watch, watch us and take care of us and then uh, that, we didn't experience much trouble. Uh, until we were able to expand and, and bring on uh, other drivers and, and then get. Uh, more replacement trucks, this truck can, the first truck came from Arizona, Jay had found it online and then. Uh, the group that Jay worked with, also two other fellows that I had been um. Fortunate to work with for ISI, Jay was with them in Virginia and they had acquired a company up there. And we were able to pick up two of their old trucks from that company, brought them down and.
Were those the two old internationals?
Yes, and so they came down and that at least gave us some backup. At the time because had we had something to go down on us, we'd have been in real trouble.
Exactly, and you're sitting with your, you know, sitting on your hands at that point.
Yeah, and, and so uh, we got those trucks delivered and, and uh, that gave us a good. Backup and then from there, uh, we kind of started buying new trucks after that point and as we. Continued to put a route together and we made those old trucks work even longer and harder. Picking up trash and they never did really ever catch a break.
Right, right.
We redid some of them or redid the bodies or overhauled the motors and that was uh, um, good and kept us. Kept us going, but we slowly added uh, new trucks.
Yeah, you slowly got rid of those original ones, didn't you?
We didn't get rid of them, we just kinda kept them as backup.
But you know, whenever you go into business in that, you can see uh, how do I say this? Basically, the trucks that you can afford are probably not the trucks that you need to buy right when you're starting a headache of a business. But you, you may not know that and then that's the, the problems of entrepreneurship is that you know that you can uh, afford this. And then you see uh, this international truck, but then it takes your experience of owning one to know that. Oh, I should not have bought that, that could have really got us in a bind and then I think that's. That's another lesson or it kind of falls into something that a lot of people need to know is that you're not gonna know everything. Whenever you first start up, you may not be the best at it right whenever you start up, so you kinda just gotta dive in like y'all did. Obtain the crappy trucks, let them break down and then know, hey, from here on out, let's stop buying these trucks, they're nothing but headaches, so. It's just part of entrepreneurship that you, you just gotta learn and go with the flow and like, I'm sure I can ask you that. Whenever y'all started, all four of y'all combined, y'all didn't know everything that, whenever y'all quit, y'all, the things that y'all knew when y'all sold. You didn't have a clue of maybe what, ten percent of everything that you learned, so that's so important to new people in. Whatever field that you're gonna go into is that you don't have to have all the answers because if you do. The, the groundwork of networking and knowing friends and knowing how to research and doing X, Y, and Z and knowing what YouTube is. You can, you can get into basically anything, you just gotta have a solid team or you gotta really, really have um. You know, your wits about yourself if you're gonna go in it solo, so I feel like y'all are a perfect example in those trucks as well and. Uh, cause man, we could have really done, we could have done better with uh, trucks out of air conditioning. Or maybe we're bigger and can do the speed limit and then, but you know, y'all grew and we got those trucks and you bought brand new trucks and. You painted them this bright uh, Ferrari orange and y'all really just took the uh, took the reins at that point. I feel like everything started changing them.
Yeah, no, that was a great time and I don't know which ones broke down more, the new ones or the old ones, but at least they could. Uh, with additional trucks, we were able to get the trash picked up, so that's what was important and. We were uh, fortunate to have everybody as hardworking and dedicated as they were, all of our. Owners were just a hardworking group and like I say, Beth was uh, she kept us tied together. Just being our chief financial officer and uh, I think that that made a big difference there, it wasn't her first rodeo and.
Right, right.
Really, um, that really helped a, a great deal and so.
And then, so let me ask you this, like you've had countless of, whether you call them employees or. First, at Midwest Waste, they were for sure employees, but then like with your personal hobbies, you've had helpers, you've had this, that and the other and then so. Throughout all these years, I feel like right at first, I really feel like you hit the jackpot with the guys, Mike and uh. Who was uh, Paul, remember Paul? And then so do you feel like, I, I know that this is a huge question for um, many people going into business. Or maybe they're already starting, they don't know how to hire somebody, but you, I for sure just feel like you got lucky with those people. Do you feel like you have a knack for looking for somebody or did they just fall into your lap by the grace of God like?
Well, I think it's a combination of all those things, but I, I do think that you want to look for somebody that. You know, they're hungry to get out there and, and hit the ground running and they want to do good for themselves, so that, that certainly. Uh, plus right there and you want them to be just like you and want to do those things and take care. You know, it was such a blessing to have Mike Carlton and he was uh, very capable on lots of different fronts and. As Gilbert came along, Gilbert, Gilbert had sent me a letter before he retired from the school district, he'd been with them for a long time and. Just inquiring if we were interested and I thought anybody that'll take the time to send me a letter like this and man, wasn't he a hand?
Yes, for sure, and he told me that he had uh, originally reached out to ISI and they just completely ghosted him, didn't. No reply, nothing and he said, well, so I decided to send your dad a letter as well and my god, we were lucky, we were so lucky and then. For anybody that, I mean, I'm sure nobody knows what we're talking about, but this gentleman named Gilbert Magagna. Was a huge part in mine and dad's uh, lives together and then uh, full circle, Gilbert passed several years back. But had a huge impact to us and then now, me and dad both have office spaces in the Hamilton Building. And uh, lo and behold, the vice president of the Realty Company here at the Hamilton Building. Is Gilbert's oldest son Cody, so I mean, it just, it's crazy how the whole world works together and then. It's just, it comes full circle all the time, but I told Cody as soon as I signed up that his dad played a huge part in our lives and I was very thankful for him. And then now I have Cody, you know, on, on the team and he's, he can answer almost any question that I have, so. I guess, yeah, sometimes you do just get lucky, we were just talking about a guy named Neo that uh, dad had working for him. Now he's just a great family friend and still helps dad with different things and um, he was just a, he was a, not a transfer student. Uh, exchange student that uh, originally is from.
Uh, he's from Serbia.
Serbia, yes, and uh, but came to Wichita, goes to MSU or went to MSU and um, I mean, just. Absolute killer in the office and then now he has his own business and then um, I honestly think the best story is. Dad bought just thousands and thousands of gallons from one particular uh, or of diesel. Uh, from one particular gas station and we became pretty good friends with the family that owned the gas station, it's the Tiger Mart on three sixty-nine. I recommend it to everybody, they're great people that work there, anyways, and great family that owns it, but. So dad became friends with the family and uh, turns out they have a genius son that also wanted to come work for dad and then. I've just felt like that random friendship turned into a great employee and so, I mean, sometimes it is luck, but then. Do you feel like that you just have a, a knack uh, for picking the right people or do you just think like? Get them in, see how they do and then if they need to go, just let them go, do you feel like you're a good fire and hire?
Yeah, I think so, I, I think that we've been very fortunate to have good people come along and that we've been able to work with and. And um, get us way down the road and they, I, I just feel like uh, we've been. Uh, blessed in that regard, but just with Fozzy uh, coming from uh. His family, the, which has all been big supporters of ours and helped us in a lot of different ways, but Fozzy, he was. Stand the computer on its ear, you know, just doing lots of things and mapping softwares that we would have taken us forever to figure out that.
Yeah, or you would have had to hire a third party, you know, at triple the price, so.
Yeah, so I think that that was a tremendous benefit to have him and, and try him and. Uh, they just uh, and, and just like John Leach that forever came. Uh, to us as an intern from Midwestern, just like these other two guys. Uh, John is still with Beth and doing tremendous amount of bookkeeping and. Uh, he was a, a great employee and hard, hard worker and.
Yeah, he knows how to keep the office together, huh?
Yeah, so I, we were fortunate in that regard, but we were blessed with lots of good people, Mike Sloan is with the county right now. He works for the auditors group and Mike was with us, also an intern from Midwestern. He just is a tremendous asset to us and we were fortunate to have those guys that were willing to dig in and say, hey, let's do thi-. Let's do this, this way, it'd make a lot more sense, it's be better this way and.
And so you were telling me that uh, you actually called the, the business school at MSU. And then so you just asked for referrals or how does that work?
Talked to, have professor call me back and he'd give us recommendations as to who he thought, or send somebody out to talk to us and. And so usually I'd visit with them, send them over to Beth, let her visit with them and um, we were just very fortunate that. We didn't talk to a lot, we were able to take the ones that came uh, to us initially and. And move on with them and it's just been a great experience, I was fortunate to get to do references for Fozzy the other day. He's getting ready to do, he does cybersecurity and um, has gotten his degree in. Computer science, so.
Cool.
We're very proud of him.
He helped you and then now you got to put in a good word for him. Well, do you have any advice for somebody that hires somebody that shows promise, yada, yada, then it goes south and. Someone needs to get rid of somebody?
Yeah, you know, that, what is the saying that um, you know, it's not the ones that um. You, you let go that cause you trouble, it's the ones that you should have let go that you never do.
I gotcha, yeah.
So, I think uh, when you realize that it's time to part ways, you need to get that over with as quick as possible and move on and. Look for other um, employees that can uh, improve you and make you better and. That have a real willingness to want to work hard and not just there for a paycheck and even though that's why they want to be at work. But at the same time, they have to have some vested ownership into what the purpose is that, why they're there and. We've been very fortunate to, to have that occur and so I think that that's a, a big attribute. To cut those ties, I, Tom Brown, which was our chief operating officer at ISI, made us all read a book. Uh, and it was about who's on your bus and if uh, you have the wrong people on your bus. Stop and get them off your bus.
Okay.
If you find somebody that needs to be on the bus, get them on the bus and.
Do you know what the title was? I'll try looking.
I have the book, I'll have to look and, and give you that author's name, uh, but it's a very good. It's a very good book about uh, finding those people and a lot of times we've, I, I felt like that. We may not had a, a exact game plan, but we'd have good ones come along, just like Gilbert, that. That uh, you knew that you needed to make a part of this team, so you snag them up and, and um, go with them.
That's awesome, that's awesome, so you've had a lot of good experience and I mean, some, not bad experience, but just lesser than good.
No, I, I think it's always a struggle anytime you start a business, um, you know, we were fortunate. Kevin Goldstein was our first banker, um, that, from American National and, and he was great for us and. And um, we would put financials together for him, show him where we were at and he helped us get our first truck bought and. And now I'm with Kevin on Campfire Board.
Cool, cool, so he's a local man then, okay, cool, cool.
Just always been, been a past president of Campfire.
Cool.
But that was uh, great and, and they're a big group and they were able to do a lot and they helped us a tremendous amount and. And a lot of good guys over there, the county banks with American National and uh, it's just a um, positive.
Pull up to that mic, get a little bit closer to that mic.
And I think that um, that is a big, a big factor anytime you're gonna be in business that you better have a strong lender. And have a good relationship with them because you're gonna need them.
Right, I got you, so um, kinda rewind a little bit, now Midwest Waste turned into something way, way, way bigger than. Uh, the fish farm and then, and we've talked about the people that came in as partners with you and uh, so. Y'all, tell me a little bit, you don't have to get into the nitty gritty, but y'all, did y'all have cash upfront, did y'all all go to the bank together?
We initially all put uh, money in uh, when I was fortunate to get to sell. Uh, bank stock from State National and had that money to invest as well as uh, Kent had. Sold some holdings in Virginia that they had done with trash company there as well as Jay. Um, had done the same thing, so we all put initial money up front and then from there, we just. Uh, borrowed the money that we needed to operate on and.
I got you.
It, there were points in time that we'd have six to eight million dollars borrowed and so, you know, that's uh, something that.
Is that just simple operating costs or was that like the trucks?
It was trucks, it was trucks and you know, you have a tremendous amount in capital in the trash business and. Far as buying dumpsters and, and uh, poly carts that you put out residentially or. Big cans for commercial uh, customers, you just invest a lot of money.
I can remember the uh, biggest trek at the, at this point in my life was you sent me to Bowie to unload a semi-truck. Full of dumpsters. and I had to pay the truck driver that delivered it. And it was, it was thirty something thousand dollars just for maybe what, like thirty something dumpsters or some?
Probably so, yeah.
I can't remember how many dumpsters it was. Me and Gilbert had to pull them all apart, but that was the biggest amount of money I'd seen on one piece of paper before. And it was just for some metal boxes, you know, but you, I mean, the old saying is you gotta pay to play. And I feel like Midwest Waste was a really good um learner for me in that, cause I remember hearing the prices of trucks and this and that. And then diesel got a little bit expensive and I can just remember, oh my, thinking, oh my gosh, this is a little bit overwhelming. But um do you feel like what?
And I bet you can't today, well, then you know, four trucks were over a million dollars to buy or order four new trucks. And I bet you can't, I bet you can't do three today.
Right, right. And like we were talking about the other day, you can't, you can't buy them. Or well, you can buy them, you can't get them back to you.
No, no, there's no uh timeliness on the order of those. So you know, it makes it, if a community today wanted to go uh bid their waste services and expect somebody new to come in and pick up their trash, they're gonna have a hard time because you know, other companies can't get the inventory they need or the equipment they need in any kind of timeliness. So there needs to be a lot longer lead time than ever before out there in doing these kind of things because companies struggle with.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I mean, that's a, it's a hard thing to come up with thirty grand or like you said, at six million. And um at that point in your life, uh whenever it got to six or eight million dollars of debt, um was that, had you worked at the county yet and then seen and handled that bigger amount of money? Or was this the, your first rodeo up in?
Well, being on the school board, you know, we had, we had a twelve million dollar budget. So I was used to uh seeing a big payroll. It wasn't my money, but it was um important to me. But seeing those kind of dollars had got me exposed to it, but.
Right.
Yeah, it was very, we watched that and we paid attention to that all the time as to where we stood. And anytime that we could get any type of windfall, a lot of times, and we had some customers that paid us annually upfront.
Cool.
And so they'd pay us for the year, uh you know, and anytime we could buy down some of that debt, we would.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And I know that just through me and you talking um about different things, that you're not, you're not afraid of debt or you're not afraid to take on debt to better your position in business or personal, whatever. And I mean, is that something that you just, you, you don't fear because you have the experience with? I mean, because where I, I come from is like Dave Ramsey, get it paid off, don't have it, don't have a credit card. But I mean.
Well, and I think there's a couple of lines of thought there. I, I think in a lot of instances, you're gonna have to um do that in order to grow and to build what you need to build because we're, everybody's not sitting on that cash. And are, can you wait to s- to acquire the cash?
Right.
In order to uh put together what you need? So it's gonna require you to go out and, and uh borrow money. But I think it is, it can be uh spooky at times because you know, you've got to know that you've got that um ability to pay that debt back and you want to get it resolved as soon as possible. And but it's a good thing as far as business is concerned because it, it helps us expand and grow when we need to instead of uh waiting on the time that.
Right, right. It's hard to save up money big time. It is. I mean, just with day to day and if you're in the heavy equipment or trucking industry, it's blowing tires or blowing motors and changing oil, oils just, and oil changes, you know, well over a hundred dollars. So it's always, always something. Those trucks are just racking up miles. And so um I guess it's just one of those things. You gotta learn how to, how to dance with it because it's, it's for sure just part of business is owning debt.
And just being fortunate to know uh good people, then they, they can advise you as well there. And I think having a good bookkeeper that's got a good understanding on, you know, uh long-term de- long-term debt is nothing that you want to um sink yourself into. But short-term debt is something that you're probably going to have to do if you're.
Short-term in y'all's uh position would be like borrowing money to buy dumpsters and trucks and.
Right.
Okay.
With the three-year to five-year payback.
Okay, yeah. So what would you consider a long-term, like bu- buying buildings or offices?
Yes, and, and, and the, in a lot of instances, that's a different regard because you uh stretch that out in um over a, a longer period of time. You don't want to, that asset's gonna grow in value for you. Where uh if you financed a dump truck or a trash truck for ten years, well, you've probably wore it smooth out in five and you've still gotta pay on it five more. So you don't want to get into that.
Right, right, right. I, I agree.
And so keeping it as short as possible and, and being able to afford those payments when you can is another um I, I just think a smart way to maneuver through that because it can be difficult and it can be overwhelming. And who knows what's going to come along that's gonna throw you a curveball? So you've gotta be prepared for that and stay grounded a lot of times. And then not panic when it uh is not coming together right because you can get uh reach out and get some help uh from different ones and get some advice as to what to do because not every uh well-laid plan comes together.
Right, right, exactly. You can have the best intentions possible and potentially have the best plan possible. And sometimes the fish just don't take the bait, you know? And that's a hard one to really cope with is you could have swore that you're onto the next hot commodity, you know, the next wheel and uh you just kinda gotta put your pride to the side sometimes and uh reassess.
Right.
But then so um, well, you know, I mean, that's, there's, there's two more hours that we could talk about Midwest Waste. But and so in two thousand thirteen, um the former county commissioner, he admitted that he was going to uh retire. And then so, I mean, tell me what went through your head at that point? You have a extremely successful, extremely busy company. Tell me what got you back?
I remember uh Bill Presson was the county commissioner prior to me, a long time uh experience with Tex Dot, just an extremely good person to be around and a great county commissioner. And uh came by honestly because of his involvement in um uh Tex Dot and what he had uh experienced there for all those years. But Bill also uh continues to serve with me on the Campfire Board and uh just a great, well-rounded person. But I remember being in Fort Worth when uh we were picking up trash and I was down there uh setting out some carts, I think, for new business. And the uh talked to Bill and he said that he just wasn't gonna run again and we had to contemplate uh what we wanted to do. And so that at the time would take place, that all of the election and stuff would happen. And then you would take office in two thousand and fifteen.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So that's what we decided to do after much thought. And um we decided to go ahead and move forward with that and visited with a lot of good friends about it. And just decided it's something that um felt like that it, we would uh uh want to do and, and jointly with what I was already doing.
Right.
And we had uh grown to the point where we were um easier to manage as far as that.
Right, you had some leadership from the bottom now.
Yeah.
Helping in the middle part, yeah.
So I was able to uh not be, have to be there on every uh given day, all day long. So that made a big difference. And then so we decided to pursue um county commissioner and was successful in that.
Mm-hmm.
And, and took office then in January of two thousand and fifteen.
And I think that's so important that uh you know, in two thousand, you ran and you didn't get what you wanted. And you could have just been like, screw it, screw politics. These people don't want me. I don't have to be around here, yada, yada. But over a decade, a decade and a half later, you go right back into it for something that you really wanted. And then you sunk your teeth in and then I feel like, I find, I feel like y'all really had it figured out and you, you knew how to run and uh internet was bigger. You, you got Facebook, you got out there, you went to the Pancake Festival. You really just marketed yourself well. And we knocked on doors, we hung door hangers, we did all kinds of stuff till your feet were just blistered at the end of the day. And we, we got you in there and I was, I was proud to help. I cleaned up. I still had shaggy hair, but I combed it real nicely and went door to door. But um I, it's just, that's a powerful story, you know? Don't give up on something that you feel passionate about.
And I never felt, I had never felt like that we were um ousted in two thousand. I, I felt like I knew, in looking back, I could tell that I was in the wrong party to have ran a position I did at the time, but wouldn't have had it another, wouldn't have done it a different way.
Right, right.
Just when, won the race.
And that's good to stick to your guns. That's honorable to not just change. Because I feel like we all, we all know and we all see it, politicians saying one thing just to get in and then get into power and then just say, hey, that was all, they won't even tell you, but you'd see it in their actions. That was all just a good story. Thanks for getting me here. Don't talk to me.
Yeah.
And so I'm, I'm glad that you stuck to your guns.
Yeah, I think so. And then looking back, we learned so much from having no clue as to what to do and, and how to do it and then learned a bunch uh by the time it was time for me to run again.
Right.
And that worked out great and it was just a, you know, I had so many good people that helped me.
Right, right.
And it was a good experience and, and glad to get seated in twenty fifteen. And then we've been able to do a lot of great things for Wichita County and look forward to a lot of mu- a lot more. We've got so much to do. Um the county has always been a frugal operator. They're, they operate as, as um, I, I guess the word would be tight as possible.
Yeah.
And so you know, we, we weren't in debt, we're not in debt other than owing for the jail, which will be a long-term debt and uh, and roughly takes just over a nickel of your tax rate.
Yeah.
To pay that debt annually. But um other than that, in which we needed the jail, we needed the facility. Ours were old and antiquated and uh really causing us a tremendous amount of maintenance issue and trouble. And so we've been fortunate to get that new jail passed, the bond issue uh passed and we were able to start it. It's now built and the sheriff's in it as long, as well as the five hundred inmates that Wichita County puts to bed each night. And they're housed out there and we're able to do it in the most efficient and um more equitable way than ever before.
I got you. Well, good, good. I mean, and that's, that's something to be prideful over is um the, the no debt part besides that. So that, that's good. But I had one story, I, I have one thing to say and then I gotta ask you about the overall position of commissioner. So help me stay on track. But I think something that really stuck with me right whenever you got your job and I really think it's honorable, is right whenever you got in, y'all passed um something to lower your salary. And you, you took a pay cut as soon as you got in there. And then so I just feel like that, I was like, you know what? Dad's the right person for this job. If he's willing to go into another job, you know, of course you're there to earn money. That's part of the position. But you were willing to take less to get more into your budget and then to play with it in other ways. So that.
Well, and we had some, you know, the county at the time was starting to slowly bleed. They weren't, the, the county has a good reserve and they use that reserve to balance their budget with each year. And, and we were slowly uh starting to spend some of that reserve by making the budget from one year to the next. And whether it was half a million dollars or a million dollars, it was just slowly eroding our fund balance. And so we wanted to change that around and not just us, but a lot of people and a lot of employees affected where we had to uh look at our hold cards and cut, cut way back.
Well, that's good. That's good. Well, so let me ask you, um I know it took me a long time to, to figure you and your coworkers out, but give me a short general summary of what a county commissioner does on a um, just, just the overall job description.
Well, you know, the, as a county commissioner and most elected officials carry a bond of some sort, but a county commissioner carries two bonds because we're bonded for precinct four, a road and bridge commission. Um I, I have to carry a bond there and the work we do on um the county roads that lie in precinct four, which is about a hundred shy of a hundred and forty miles of road. Uh we take care of those and that's my duty to keep those up. And we try to uh afford uh the overhaul and maintenance of about twenty plus miles of road each year.
Okay.
Now that doesn't account for all the culverts that we have to change and that may decide to give it up or whatever um comes along.
Emergency part in there, yeah.
Ditch work, that's, you know, all part of maintenance as well as gravel roads that wash out and those kind of things and keeping the equipment that in check that uh takes to do all that work with. So that, that's one hat right there is taking care of the roads in precinct four. And that's what I'm charged with as being a commissioner. But also then the county budget as a whole, all of the services that the county um and what we think as of the courthouse and the annex, all the services provided uh through the county, where you go get your marriage license, where you file court papers, where you pay your taxes, where you register a vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
All of those are the other hat that we wear and we're in charge of the budget that operates all of that.
What about the sheriff's office and the DA?
The sheriff's office and the district attorney's office, all, we're uh bound to put together the monies that those guys have to operate off of. And so that's a whole uh separate issue is dealing with the county budget as a whole, separate and apart from precinct four is only a part of that budget.
Right.
But then we're charged with the budget as a whole.
I got you. So yeah, that's basically two jobs in one of being, you don't have to be a heavy equipment operator, but you're essentially running a heavy equipment operation with, I, I've seen everything that y'all have, bulldozers and excavators and dump trucks and truck tractors. And then uh, then you have a full shop of people that you have to um take care of and run and make sure they know what to do. But I don't know if everyone has been in the county uh in the courthouse. I'm sure majority of people have. But that is a humongous operation and then to keep everybody happy there, I, I've heard some of your stories. Sometimes you can't because it's such a big operation.
No, it's hard. Uh there's a, a lot of moving parts and a lot of employees. And, and fortunate that, you know, we live in a area and a place where people work hard and try to do their jobs and carry on and a lot of places aren't as fortunate. And just being in Texas, it lends itself to being that way. But uh you know, I would hate to be in a northeastern uh area of the country that they don't feel that same.
Right, right.
There's a lot of employees that don't wanna be there and, and just wanna draw a check and, and have all kinds of trouble. But you know, we have frugal operators, our elected officials are, are, try to do their darndest to keep costs down and, and operate and don't think anything about the uh place where they operate. And you know, it may not have had a uh new coat of paint on it in ten years, but they don't, you don't hear them complain about that or say things. They continue to do their job and do it well and bring innovative ideals to uh the workplace, so.
Cool, cool. You know, I see a lot of people, whether it be on Wichita Falls, Rants and Raves or whatever, but they accuse you and other commissioners of making laws. Now can you, can you tell us more about that? Do commissioners actually make laws? Or do you have any part in any of that?
No, there's very, there's very few times that we would actually be involved in anything that's considered lawmaking at all. Now the county can issue on certain instances orders, very similar to ordinances in a s- in a city. But uh they're very, we're very limited in, in those uh actions that we can take to actually uh mandate what people do about this or that. Most of what we deal with are state laws set up by our representatives and, and senators that uh we just have to adhere to the uh laws laid down for the state of. That uh we just have to adhere to the uh laws laid down for the state of Texas. And that's what the county government is just an arm of the state of Texas government. And, and so that's the rules that we adhere to, but we really don't come up with any of those um legislative procedures. We may be involved in uh letting our opinion be known or constituents' opinion be known. But to actually make law, the county commissioner doesn't have any part of that.
Good, good. Good to know because I just, I see it all the time and I'm for sure not gonna be the one to let me correct you. So I just keep out of it, but if anyone can ever listen to this and then maybe, maybe they'll learn something from that. And I, I can remember whenever you told us, hey, I'm gonna run for this. And um, I really wasn't that uh involved or cared that much about politics at the time. And I just had to ask, what is a county commissioner? I don't even know what it is. Like, it, it didn't even, it didn't even click or register. But then, so I've watched you and I'm fortunate to know the other ones as well. And then uh, I see everything that y'all do pretty personally, you know? And so I think it's a cool job and uh, but I feel like you've been, you've always been drawn to money managing. And I feel like you're pretty uh, pretty good at it, you know? What does that come from? What's that stem from? Because I feel like I've, I don't know if I've picked it up from you, but I feel drawn to it as well. And, and enjoy running a tight ship, you know?
Well, I, I just, I don't know if it's um probably first and foremost, growing up working for the Williamson family. And, and them being in the banking business as such, getting involved early when I was um still on the school board. With appraisal district and helping me understand, you know, that's the county's revenue stream is taxes. Ad valorem taxes off of properties in Wichita County. That's how we pay our bills for the most part. At least three-fourths of our bills are paid that way.
Okay.
There are monies that come in from fines and fees and from registering your vehicle.
Okay.
That are a, a form of tax, but not ad valorem tax. And so, but being involved with the appraisal district and getting to work with great people. Eddie Trigg was the director at the time when I came on and now Lisa Music is. And it just uh, you know, very, they spend a lot of time staying up with the changes that going on. And uh, that go on in the state of Texas concerning appraisal districts. And we've had in the last just couple of years tremendous change there. And so I, I've been, uh, it's just something that interests me in keeping up with. And the, the tax rate and, and we've been fortunate to be able to move that tax rate down. Over the last two years that we've held uh the, the tax rate that we set raised no more money. Year over year than it did the year prior. So uh, we were fortunate to be able to do that. Keep those in, in place and be able to operate as, as efficiently as we could. And it doesn't, just because we decide to do that, it only works when everybody else is willing to do their part too. And keep their uh costs down. We're fortunate to get to a district attorney, just like you mentioned, John Gillespie. Very frugal with the money that he's given to operate with. Uh, if you notice the amount of caseload that they carry and what they do. Uh, a lot of times he has to do it shorthanded. They double up and get the work done. But he's innovative in coming up with new uh procedures or new ideals. That um will get us more bang for the buck. That's just uh, he came into office doing that. And I've admired him for that. David uh Duke, at the same time, our sheriff, he's surrounded himself with good guys. Uh, Will Rutledge and uh Will at the jail has been able to uh do some great things. As we transitioned over there, that uh monitor the great number of employees that work for the jail. And then Patrick, keeping those deputies out on the street and managing what they do. If you've ever noticed, you know, when you take uh Patrick, for example, that is uh David's chief over the field deputies. Uh, if you've ever noticed the sheriff's car, I'm um always pleased to see them. They're in good shape. They're well taken care of. They manage them well. That's all his doing. And so, you know, that's another um, uh place where employees, if they weren't. And didn't have a heart to do that, it'd just cost taxpayers all kinds of money.
Just be draining that bank account, especially that emergency fund. If you're having to buy Tahoe after Tahoe from someone smoking in them. Or you know, just letting crashes happen, you know, so that's good. So it's, it boils down to, you know, personal responsibility on a low level, huh?
Yeah, Will and Patrick both uh do a great job. David was fortunate to have both of those. He's always surrounded himself. Daryl Shote before Patrick, Daryl uh was in that position and also did a great job. And so they're Johnny on the spot when it comes to needing them. Um, you know, I know last year uh we had a stranger show up at the house at like one o'clock in the morning. And I mean, in nothing flat, the sheriff's department was there. And um, so you know, they do a great job for the county and, and take care of their business well. And I, I give kudos to all three of those guys, David and Will and Patrick for, for the work they do there. Just like the district attorney uh managing their dollars. It, it's, it's extremely important because there's a lot of them to operate the sheriff's department in Wichita County, about sixteen million dollars.
Man, man.
So it adds up in a hurry and um, you get sideways and uh if somebody's not tending or steering the ship. The right direction, so.
Well, that's good. That's good to know. And it's good to know that we have people that are, you know, conscious of that as well. And uh, I mean, I feel like, I feel like the definitions of Republican and Democrats are changing. But to have someone that's at least conservative with the dollar signs, everyone can resonate with that, you know? And we, we do wanna see positive growth and change, but with someone that can at least, you know, not blow it on a bunch of stupid. Stuff that doesn't need to be bought or new Tahos or whatever sheriffs can spend money on. But that's good. That's good to know that it trickles down to other people, you know, wanting to uh, wanting the same thing. That's kinda what you've talked about. On different aspects as well. But I wanted to know, um, and I mean, I don't know if this is private or not. But is there anything cool or any new operations or projects that the county's planning on? I know that y'all have done a lot of beautification, which I think is amazing to see the courthouse coming back to life. And, but anything kinda new or modern happening?
We.
I know that the jail's done, but.
We, we have dedicated that uh federal stimulus money, uh at least ten, close to ten million dollars. Of that money for uh more extensive renovations. And so if you've not been over to the annex, you can start seeing a, a lot of improvements on the first floor. Tommy Smy's office, which is our tax assessor collector. Uh, we're going to be renovating uh that office.
Is that the office that's uh not a part of the courthouse, the one that's down Sixth Street?
It's um Sixth and Scott.
Okay, okay.
And so we'll be.
That's good, cuz that's old, like seventies, eighties orange in there, so good.
So a lot of that has already changed. There's new flooring coming into place, tile on the walls. And, and uh, I, I think that that uh building is long due an overhaul. And, and the first floor is where most of the traffic is there, going into Tommy's office and where you get your tags. And so for a period of time, we're going to transition that um, getting tags. At locations like Elektra, Burke and Owl Park for a period of time while they uh remodel. Uh, the Wichita office here.
Cool.
And so uh Tommy's put a lot of time into planning strategically, how to move those people. And we've made accommodations for more uh customer service people at those locations. And so that's coming quickly to let us do um more efficient air conditioning. And flooring and, and all types of, of uh construction. Things uh in his facility and just have a entirely new look when we're through. So we're excited about that. And then if you've been in the courthouse, you've noticed our elevators, which were wore out a long time ago.
Had carpet on the walls and stuff, yeah.
We're getting those uh built. That's been a long drawn out process, but it's coming. There's new elevator now when you go into, if you have to go to the appraisal district on the third floor in the annex. Uh, Sixth and Scott, you'll ride a new elevator up in the front of that. So we've gotten that one already in place and then the two at the courthouse will change out and will accommodate all the floors. Which the old elevators really didn't get you to all levels of the floors as needed. And so this is gonna be uh very important and uh I think that uh go a long ways. And just giving a fresher, newer look to the courthouse than ever before.
I, yeah, I'm all for it. I think, I think I can speak for majority of the county whenever um, the idea of turning that old box. Basically into something new and vibrant, or not, not even new, bringing it back to its old glory. Cuz I've seen the pictures. It was a beautiful building and just slowly over time, we, we modernized it for that time area. And we didn't even realize how far away from, you know, the historical beauty of it. And it's almost a completely different building, but I'd seen another commissioner, um Mark Beecham. I follow him pretty closely on Facebook. He updates, you know, um county people of just things going on. And he had shared a, I think it was a Texas, another Texas county. They had done a fifteen or twenty million dollar renovation to their building because they had an old, modern era eighties, nineties looking building. And they brought it back to almost original and he, he kinda explained how much it would be. And it would be very similar for Wichita County to do it. And I think if that was on the table, then I feel like a lot of the county would support it. Just because you know how you feel whenever you go into Weatherford or Archer City or um some of these places with just. Their whole town is surrounded by their beautiful courthouse. That i- it's just, it gives you a good feel of like an older time whenever you go in there. And then when you walk into Archer's, it's still modernized uh inside their courthouse. I haven't been in Weatherford's, but it's still beautiful around that roundabout. So um, I think, I think if we could get, you know, a, a better building that people can be prideful of. Then it would just be something neat. And, and I feel like our county is all, or at least this whole area uh in general is so against spending money. To make things prettier, where they, I feel like the general consensus is just spend money to either make money. Or just get it done, uh get it done however cheapest way possible. But the, the things and pictures I see at the courthouse, that old wine rack uh style things coming down, like this is awesome. I'm glad to see it. I'm glad to see the revitalization. And it goes right along with um, you know, downtown Wichita Falls. Um, that's, that's a whole memo right now is buy it and fix it. Let's get more people in here. And so that's, that's awesome. Do you think that we'll ever use those big staircases at the front of the courthouse as a opening um ever again? Or do you think we'll always enter from the parking lot?
Uh, that's a good question. With security uh measures being what they are and the need to do that. I, I would love to come in and enter that building up those uh stairwells that are there in the front of the building. I, I don't remember that in my time actually uh doing that. I, it probably was when I was young. And I don't remember when that changed, but um I would love for it to, to be able to be that way. But now with the need to monitor uh people as they come in with courts active in there. And uh, you know, we have a full roster of, of trials going on all the time. So you just have.
Yeah, those stairs come in right by courtrooms, don't they?
Uh, there is a court uh right there. Uh, Judge Butler is located to the left when you come in. And uh then uh you go to the, uh actually to the third floor where most of the other courtrooms will be. And that's uh, you just need a way to monitor people and have a, a little closer control on it than ever before. But we're, we're going to have the space now with the, the jail moved out. And a lot of room uh come available to do more with courtroom, courtroom technology. And, and make it more user friendly for what these guys are used to doing. And then even be able to rent, we can't renovate a courtroom because we can't shut one down right now.
Okay, they're so busy. I got you, wow.
And so we'll make accommodations for that, be able to move a courtroom and then go from there. And uh be able to renovate all of those. But the district clerk's office will move down on the bottom floor and we'll actually have some space available for. Uh, right now, if you're a, a called to jury duty, you're standing in the hallway waiting. And that's very miserable and uncomfortable. And we're gonna develop a area in the old district uh clerks. Uh, space that will allow people to sit and wait to be called. And that's gonna help a whole bunch right there. And, but we're excited about those uh things. And uh Mark's been very uh, you know, he, he's been very involved in uh the work that we've done. With that and, and we're excited to get to continue it. Never, uh, no one would have ever thought we would receive uh the kind of money. We did from the federal government and that's just an opportunity because it keeps that burden off of you and me.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
When we're able to spend those monies because otherwise, you know, we don't have untold dollars to throw into construction. Or renovation projects. We have to uh space it out and spend a million, basically a million a year doing projects. And it doesn't take anything to spend a million dollars anymore.
Right, oh man, yeah.
That's um, but that's kind of what we're limited to, but we were fortunate to have put away some money for this very thing.
Good.
As well as receiving these other federal dollars that we're be able to do some uh great and impro- great improvements with.
That's good. I mean, you love to hear it. You just like knowing that we're coming out of the stone age. And, and I, I know some of the systems that y'all have implemented since you've been in office to get things off of just paper. And then get them onto the computer, make them more of a cloud type um network. So that's good, you know? And for a lot of people that don't know that these commissioners don't just, it's not just the four of them sitting. And then thinking of these ideas by themselves. They go to courses, they go to Austin, they go to um, uh, what do you call commissioners?
We have trainings.
Yeah, trainings just all the time throughout the year, just to keep them up to date. Because what's going on in Wichita County is far from what's going on in, in Harris County. So everybody gets together, they learn new things, they, they put their minds together and implement some new things. So don't just think that, oh, these are just the old white men of Wichita County making all these ideas. There, there's a leadership and you know, and they're getting trained and they're learning new things. And so I'm, I'm glad to see it. And I, I like the idea that uh we got this federal money to, you know, make the place clean up a little bit. I'd seen a poll the other day, I think it had to do with the city and I took it. And the city was gonna get a X amount of money. It was a lot of money that they were allotted. And there was only certain things that they could use the money on. And they gave a poll, what would you like to see your city spend it on, yada, yada? A lot of it was utilities, a lot of it was street uh construction, but then there was options of something with art. And modernization, cleaning up something. And so I voted for the art. Cuz we probably don't have a big art budget here. We probably don't have a big beautification budget here. And then I think the third that I voted on was high-speed internet because um, that it's just, there's no reason why we shouldn't be running fiber. Every single telephone pole that we get on. But yeah, that's what my thought process was is we have a budget for fixing roads. We have a budget for um, you know, trimming trees, all, all these different things that the city does. But let's, let's bring some new life in. And I think that's what my generation's all about is that we have, um, we have the foundations built. Let's, let's make this place nice again, you know, or for maybe the first time. And you know, I've always enjoyed my time here. But others don't see it like we were talking about that poll that the uh Wichita Chamber did. And um, people are just basically sad living here, but we have the means and the people now. That are slowly chipping away, slowly making things beautiful again and slowly, you know, getting us into the twenty-first century. So it's a great thing to see. It's awesome. I'm, I'm appreciative of it. But uh, well, um, I wanna ask, uh, it's gonna start with you. I wanna ask every politician type person that comes in here, um, you don't actually have to run. You run unopposed this year, or was it this year?
Yeah.
So coming up, running unopposed, but um, why should we vote, re-vote for Commissioner Watson years to come? You know, this is your time to. You know, this is your time to tell us, so for some people that don't know, this is what this whole podcast is about. To really get to know these people that are running your county or your city or businesses that you like. So I wanna hear from uh, Jeff here, you know, his, his statement to why we should vote for him again, if you're in precinct four.
Yeah, I, I, that's a very good question, very fair question. And there may not always be a time you want to do that. But you know, just like this uh, past budget seizure, season, the, the county judge, which is our budget coordinator and actually starts putting all the things in place to perform the preparations of the budget. Had stated early up that he wanted to increase the tax rate by two cents. Uh, add two cents to our ad lorum tax in order to do some of the things that uh, he thought we should, should do. And from early up, I was uh, adamant about trying to maintain uh, the tax rate at where we were at to not add new revenue. And just utilizing all of these uh, windfalls that we had in place. Uh, federal stimulus money as well as being prudent and having carryover from the previous budget. I did not want to burden the taxpayer anymore. Being a taxpayer myself, I understand that. And I know that it's a tremendous burden on people. But I think I'll always champion the cause of trying to, you know, it's not our place in uh, government, county government to uh, tax you and buy CDs with that money. That's not what we're supposed to do. If, if we have a plan to make things better and to build and improve the quality of life for the citizens of Wichita County, that's what we need to do. And for no better way than just to guess at whether or not we need the money, uh, is not a good way to approach taxes for people. Now that especially with the praise values as high as what they are, multiplying that by the rate that we set to generate the money needed to operate, um, it can get out of hand in a hurry. And a lot of people experienced great increases with their um, values of their homes and rental properties and commercial properties, as well as their uh, ag or the um, land that is set aside for ag value or have ag value on it. A lot of those experienced great increases in the value of that land. And so, uh, you know, when you start multiplying that tax rate by a house that went from forty thousand to sixty thousand, you're paying more in taxes. And whether the tax rate stayed the same or not, you're gonna pay more uh, just simply because the value of what you're paying on has increased.
Yeah.
And so, but I think I'm always going to be frugal about that. Always going to fight to keep that tax rate down best I can. Because it's very simple uh, to need the money for different things and just go up on taxes. That's, that's a easy uh, to do.
Yeah, that's the easy way out, for sure.
Easy way out. And I don't like taking that avenue. And I think we should make sure we're squeezing all the juice from the orange before we start down that road. So.
Do you think that you're, you're good at basically trimming the fat?
I think so. And I, I would trim a lot more fat um, given the chance. I think there's a lot of times that we continue to do things that um, you know, we're pulling with maybe ten horse teams. And we could use two horse team could pull it just fine. And, and so a lot of times uh, you just do it because that's the way it's always been done. And I don't like that.
Yeah.
I think that we need to look at. And we have now come to the point, uh, one of the things that was important to me when I became a commissioner was to update our technology in the courthouse. And we've done that. It's been a hard road. We had a lot of information to be moved over. It's, it's getting to the point where now everyone is transitioned over. But it expedites the way when someone's arrested and taken to jail, all the way to they're being released. Uh, that software maneuvers and, and deals with that in such a more appropriate way than ever before. We had an antiquated system that was very difficult and required a lot of printing and, and processing and filing paper that no longer has to take place. So I think we're going to continue to look for those type of things that bring innovation to us and help us with um, reducing costs at every turn. So.
Cool, good.
Uh, certainly what I'm interested in, in doing and fighting for that, uh, keeping those. You know, I, I have no ability whatsoever to set the uh, price of a home appraisal.
Right.
So ever, even though I serve on the appraisal district board, we, we are there to make sure that things run smoothly and to hire and fire the um, chief appraiser. And uh, she advises us as to what's going on. And she adheres to the laws that are before her to do, to appraise property with. And they do an outstanding job. She trains people all across the state. She selected to speak to different trainings. I've been to uh, several trainings that Lisa's been the guest speaker of, because she's very knowledgeable with what's going on in the state. But you know, those um, people that are affected, I feel for them. And I know that uh, it's a burden and paying taxes is a very difficult task. But we still want to provide the services. And I want, I want to go to Wichita Falls and register my uh, car or uh, and I will park, be able to uh, do that and not drive to a centralized county like Montague. Where we're splitting that service up. And, and um, you know, we could easily combine and all of us drive a hundred miles to go get car tags. And who wants to do that? I don't want to do that. And or file my deed over in Wise County, because we've combined services with other counties. And I don't wanna go file my paperwork there. I want to do it in Wichita County and, and that cost. And I don't want the guy that uh, robbed somebody's house or beat somebody up real bad. I don't want him uh, out on the street and contending with. I want him locked up. And for that, I'm gonna pay.
Hmm, right.
To have that service provided. And, and it's part of our society is um, that we live in. We want it to be that way. And so those things cost. And that's where um, our taxes come in to pay for those things.
Cool, cool. Well, that's awesome. That's awesome. One, I, I wanna ask one last thing and we can kinda wrap this up. But I th- I thought it was always really interesting, right whenever you got into office, you took uh, real interest in how poor um, our um, annex was. And just poor shape it was in, just bad air conditioning, but leaking everything. And uh, it's, it, it was almost weird to be like, oh wow, someone actually gives a crap about how certain inmates have to live their life in, you know, in jail. Whether they stopping by for just a quick trip or in, or, or gonna be there for a while. It was interesting to see, you know, someone actually care about someone else's wellbeing. And those people could have, you know, done some horrible crap or, you know, maybe they're just sitting in there for bad parking tickets. But um, I saw you take a lot of pride in getting a new annex. And was that just, what kinda fueled that fire in you? Because I saw it firsthand that you went and toured other counties' annexes. And you saw how their courthouse worked with their uh, you know, jail facility versus whether it was in, in-house or out of house. And then so what kinda fueled that fire in you and, and got the other commissioners in it as well? To uh, to wanna do better for, for certain people that may not do any good for our community, period.
Well, I, I think that um, it's a combination of a lot of things. One, I, I think having a sheriff's department that's made up of a lot of younger uh, people that wanted innovative concepts to the way that we were doing business. Uh, sheriff that's very proactive and, and he was uh, paramount in showing me where we were deficient. And lots of areas are just very old and antiquated. And I certainly give it to the commissioners uh, prior to me, because they were being extremely frugal to take a warehouse or a factory, as it was, the Sprague Annex that the county owns and very fortunate to own. Uh, they converted that and built those cells inside that.
So the county didn't build that building originally then?
No, it was, it was Sprague Electric originally.
Never knew that.
Uh, we were fortunate to be able to acquire it after they uh, ceased doing business. And but then gutted that building. It had a lot of uh, still a lot of factory concepts to it and the way it was made. But uh, going and touring that, we built cages inside that building in which no longer really is a concept in Texas. You don't see those type of jails exist much. But there's a very uh, big rooms out there that are barred up completely, including the ceiling. And where we held forty or fifty inmates at a time in different pods. And but noisy, you could hear, you couldn't hear yourself think. Uh, the air conditioning exposed uh, up top. And it was also added to the equation about being very loud. And so it was just a, even though I applaud the, the men that put that together and they were very frugal about doing it, built something that we used for a great number of years for a, as uh, least amount of money as possible. And so I applaud them for being able to do that, but.
And that's the same building that Vernon College has their technical courses in?
We're in the back end of that building. Vernon's in the front end of that building. And Vernon is a tenant of the county.
Okay, okay.
And so fortunate to have that relationship and partnership there. But the uh, the time had came when I took office to press forward with, they had talked about it for uh, at least ten years prior to me taking office. And I felt like the time was there. We had lots of knowledge and, and saw what the concepts were being done across Texas. And you know, just having your employees in one place, we had them in two. We had them downtown and out there. That's two kitchens to run, two everything. And so we were.
And all the fuel for them going from office to office, yeah. You don't even think about the little things like that.
Yeah, and the sheriff's department here, so anybody that had to go uh, out there from administration to the annex, it was just always to have it centralized into one location is what we developed and what we built. But it is such a state of the art, such a better uh, deal now. And with the help of a lot of different people, we toured a lot of facilities and looked at a lot of concepts that were out there. And then selected an architect that had been involved in lots of uh, these in Texas, building jails in Texas. And so I think that was um, just something that interests me to do it a lot better than what we had been doing and more efficient. And things that weren't as wore out is what we, we used it and we used it hard for a period of time, but it had served its purpose.
Yeah, yeah, you got your money's worth out of it for sure.
Our money's worth out of it, no doubt. And then able, uh, even the land that was acquired during that sprague purchase was where the new jails being built. So we didn't buy any property for that at the time. And now the sheriff's office has got new facilities in the front of that building. They're all right there. Able to coordinate and meet together and not be separated. So that just goes a long ways.
Good, good, good. And then so I, I've always thought it was cool, just kinda small side story. But at the ele- elementary school in Owl Park at Kidwell, uh, my Mimi's dad's name was on the plaque, Thomas C. Berry, you know, right there. I always thought it was cool, Mimi would say, hey, there's, you know, there's his name. And then now at this new uh, uh, annex and sheriff's department, I think it's awesome that I'm gonna be able to take the boys and see your name. And you know, Barry and Mark and was Lee?
Lee.
Lee's name is on there. And then so it's just cool to see, you know, that y'all really pushed through. And people ask like, how on earth did y'all get the money approved for this? But it's good to see. And you know, it, people need to be helped even when they never helped anybody else. So, and that's good, you know.
Yeah, and that's a, I think a, a lot of it, we want to try to develop programs within our facility that keeps recidivism, which is the returning of jail constantly, the returning of people to jail once they get in and get out. But you know, I can't uh, tell you how many people assisted in the endeavor, knowing that we needed to move on to higher ground. I can think of Karen Price, Judge Price's wife, helped tremendously as well with Donna Jones. They worked with me. The court gave us um, some free rein to do some educational brochures about what we currently had and, and what we were wanting to develop there. And, and we put those together. Those two women helped me and, and were just um, very paramount in, in doing what we did there, as well as a, a lot of other community people. But I just think having a proactive sheriff that wanted to see things improve and take care of them. And you know, for the most part, the people that are unfortunate enough to be serving time as inmates in our county jail, we want to move them as quick as possible, get them out and, and hopefully go about rightening their ways as whatever we can do. And so it's uh, at least now they're in a better facility than ever before. And, and uh, we have the means to help them uh, so much more efficiently than ever before.
Good, good.
Even medical services that uh, don't require us moving. Just imagine when someone has to go that's incarcerated to the doctor or stay at the hospital, that was very involved. Now we can house them right where they're at and have medical services there.
That's good. So yeah, we've ramped up the whole building, or I mean, it's a whole brand new building. So that's awesome. That's good to, good to know. Well, this would be, I know you're not too heavily involved in social media and stuff, but this would be the time that I'd give you uh, to plug anything. Um, you know, how can people reach you? How can people see what you do? If, if others don't know, Dad raises top of the line um, FFA project lambs. Um, you can look them up at JR Live Stock. That's a humongous passion of his. Um, and now that uh, I mean, you sold the farm, so you don't have anything to sell them immediately right here. Just besides, you know, show him support. You've heard his story now. You, you know, maybe he picked up your trash back in the day, or maybe he sold you some catfish. So uh, uh, you can, you can reach out to him through the county. And then, I mean, Dad, you can tell them any way that they can get a hold of you.
Look, go to the county's website. It's a good way. We're all uh, there. There's a, a forms to fill out. If you have road issues that you need to do, we've got those online now that you can uh, pull up, read about any of the precinct areas you may be interested in. Uh, our contact numbers are located on that website. And my email address, send us questions. We can uh, hunt down for you whatever you need that you're having issue or problems with. And, and uh, try to get it to resolve to the best of our ability. So.
Cool.
That's what I would recommend anyone to do.
Awesome, awesome. Well, I really enjoyed it. We've done right, just shy of um, uh, an hour and fifty minutes. After I add some junk to this, it'll be over an hour and fifty. So um, I've really enjoyed it. I had a lot of fun. This was a good first official. We've, we've tried, uh, not tried, we've practiced several different things, me, Raquel, Brad. Um, different people have uh, done this. But this is the first being um, audio and visual recorded, set down. So I think we really did a good job at it first try. And I had a lot of fun. I learned some stuff. And I just liked hearing the story. I know most of it and I learned a little bit more. So um, I just really appreciate you coming on and helping me with this. So anyways, I had fun. So um, I hope a bunch of people listen to this and maybe y'all can learn something too. So thanks, everybody.